Welcome back to the Inquiry to Workplace Drug Testing Victoria. Joining us this session, we've got members from the Pennington Institution, Mr Ryan Cohen and Mr John Ryan. Also joining us on Zoom from La Trobe University, we've got Professor Kate Shear. Can I pronounce that right, Professor? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, sorry, yes.
CEO, thank you, yes, thanks.
And also Sean McCarthy.
Sean McCarthy.
Okay. Thank you so much for making the time to turn up on Zoom and coming in today, gentlemen and Professor. Before we do continue, I'll just quickly read this information regarding the evidence you've provided us today. All evidence taken is protected by Parliament's privilege as provided by the Constitution Act 1975. And first up to the provision of the Les Council Standing Orders. Therefore, the information you provide during this hearing is protected by law. You're protected against any actions for what you say during this hearing, but you go elsewhere and repeat the same thing. Those comments may not be protected by this privilege. Any deliberate false evidence or misleading of the committee may be considered contemptible, Parliament. All evidence is being recorded. You will be provided approved version of the transcript following the hearing. The transcript will ultimately be made public and posted on the committee website. Before we proceed, I'd just like to quickly introduce the committee to you. I'm Chum Lu, Chair, and my deputy chair is Mr Ryan Ratchler. Also, we've got Miss Rachel Payne, Mr David Echenskank, Dr Sarah Mansfield, and also got Dr Rene Heath on Zoom and Mr Lee Tamas on Zoom as well. Could I please ask you to state your full name and organisation you're with? We might start with those on Zoom first, for record purpose, Professor.
Hi, yes, thank you. My name's Kate Shear and I'm with La Trobe University.
Thank you. And Sean?
My name's Sean McCarthy and I'm also with La Trobe University.
Thank you.
John Ryan, Pennington Institute.
And Rhys Cohen, Pennington Institute.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you. I know you made some mission, but before I put to the committee of questions, I'll open for both of you to just an opening statement before we do continue with the questions. Would you all just start from La Trobe University from Zoom, Professor?
Yes, thanks. Yes, Sean and I do have a few words we wanted to say by way of opening. So first of all, thank you very much to all of you for the opportunity to be here today. And sorry that we're both not able to be there in person. I just wanted to underscore a few issues that we highlighted in our written submission. Particularly, as the committee will be aware, that statutory workplace drug testing regimes only cover specific industries like law enforcement and transportation. For other workplaces, there are no governing laws or reasons for testing, the use of results, methods, the consequences for refusal or privacy protections. There is limited legislation that exists to safeguard employee privacy. And as other researchers have noted, and I'll quote here, while traditional sources of law have provided some normative framework for workplace drug testing practice, they are insufficient to ensure that workplace drug testing practice respects employee privacy while achieving legitimate goals. In our submission, we highlighted the importance of considering the relationship between drug testing and stigma and discrimination, including because various state, national and international strategies and guidelines now emphasise the need to eradicate drug-related stigma and discrimination. We suggested that workplace drug testing can risk generating stigma and discrimination in a range of ways, including through insufficient privacy protections, undignified testing methods, lacking safeguards, broad imprecise testing powers with excessive discretion, stereotypical assumptions about people who use drugs and inadequate training on stigma and discrimination. Workplaces should carefully consider the limitations of testing regimes, including lack of impairment correlation and the risk of inaccuracies and potential unintended consequences. The consensus is that workplace drug testing should be part of a comprehensive programme with appropriate safeguards and clear policies developed through employee consultation. And in our submission, we talk about recommendations from the National Centre for Education and Training on Addiction, which recommends that programmes focus on counselling, whatever punitive outcomes, target safety-sensitive roles, allow employee input and appeals processes and incorporate education and training. In our submission, I won't go through our various recommendations, but we emphasise key elements for workplace drug testing, including that there should be qualified personnel, secure sample handling processes, grievance processes to challenge outcomes, safeguards for intrusive testing and the like. Overall, we believe that policies should address privacy, follow statutory guidance, regulator advice and case law on areas like non-discrimination, and incorporate impairment-based testing wherever possible. I'll hand over to Sean.
Thank you, Professor.
Thank you. Despite the recommendations from the National Centre for Education and Training on Addiction, that workplace drug testing should target safety-sensitive roles. It's clear from the evidence before you that it's been expanded to everything from retail music shops to rail. And indeed, you heard that testing companies are advocating for mandatory testing in all workplaces because of assumed risks arising from people who use alcohol and other drugs or AOD making decisions. Yet our industrial frameworks are not up to date with current drug laws. And as a result, testing can lead to punitive responses such as termination, forced leave, targeting of older workers and influencing workers to forego medication. As other submitters have acknowledged, AOD is not a major contributor to workplace injury as compared to road trauma. And there isn't sufficient evidence that testing reduces workplace injury, except to some degree in the transportation sector. Under the Occupational Health and Safety, or OHS, Act, there is no express mandate or prohibition on workplace drug testing. And the Act is silent on this and, in our view, inadequately addresses the issue. This means that there's not clarity on what kind of tests can be used, whether these be buckle swabs, urine, breath, blood, hair or oral fluid, and also on what grounds workers can be tested. And in the absence of this legislative guidance, WorkSafe's 2017 Guide for Developing a Workplace Alcohol and Other Drugs Policy stipulates that alcohol and other drugs in the workplace should be assessed in the same way as other occupational health and safety issues. And it also acknowledges that a positive drug test is not always directly related to impairment. But it does not include this in its tips for setting out a workplace AOD policy. And the guide also perpetuates problematic language that stigmatises people who use AOD and their colleagues. We're pleased that WorkSafe has agreed to revise this guide and we believe it should include a more prescriptive and stigma-sensitive framework for workplace AOD policies. What's crucial is that the OHS regulations stipulate that a person is only adversely affected if their judgment or capacity is impaired. But as WorkSafe acknowledged, assessing impairment is a real challenge for drugs as compared to alcohol. And most testing companies only test for presence with no clear cutoffs for impairment. Furthermore, we believe that issues relating to privacy and confidentiality of workers are sometimes not properly considered by testing companies or workplaces, even though testing may be intrusive and raises confidentiality and privacy issues. And sometimes testing is commenced if drugs are found in the workplace based on a problematic assumption that the mere presence of drugs may cause impairment. Concerningly, some submitters discussed workers needing to declare drug use and said it would be an issue if this was not disclosed. However, Fair Work Australia has held that workers should not have to disclose personal information about prescription medication unless and until they've returned to confirm positive test or if they have reason to believe they're suffering or may suffer side effects. And we will be concerned if other workplaces try to introduce mandatory notifications, given the very real chances of stigma and discrimination that would follow. Finally, we agree with Bariox's submission that Section 7 of the Equal Opportunity Act should be amended to clarify that where a person uses prescription medication or requires treatment for a disability, that is a characteristic that a person with a disability generally has. But we have identified some issues with the definition of disability that we could address in a supplementary submission if the committee would be so minded. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. John?
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm John Ryan, the CEO of Pennington Institute and very privileged to be here today. So thank you very much for the invitation. These are definitely very difficult issues and I don't have any envy for your position trying to work your way through them. Just this morning, because of Pennington Institute's role in relation to International Overdose Awareness Day, I've been speaking with the CDC in Atlanta, Georgia, about the changing dynamics in the American drug market, which includes obviously drugs that we don't have in our system yet, particularly fentanyl. They are struggling in a much more dire set of circumstances than we are in Australia. But the thing that strikes me is that we're all on a learning journey in relation to these issues. And it's not long ago that we really did optimistically believe that we could eradicate these problems. What we've come to learn is that we need to better manage these problems. And I think from a Pennington Institute perspective, that's focusing on community safety and health. And in relation to these substances, particularly cannabis, we've got this challenge of changed circumstances. And now we've got prescribed cannabis, which if you ask the patients who have received relief from their prescribed cannabis, it's an amazingly positive story very often. That doesn't mean that our regulatory and cultural approach to these issues has really caught up with the emerging evidence in relation to these substances, nor, I think, in our understanding of their benefits and how we should amend our systems to accommodate improved understanding. And we do really have, I think, a positive and a negative in relation to these substances. There's no better example, I think, in relation to opioids. I wouldn't want to deny somebody in pain access to opioid pain relief. On the other hand, we do know that from our Australia's Annual Overdose Report that opioids are significantly, or medicinal opioids are significantly implicated in the overdose toll, which does exceed the road toll. So we do have very significant challenges and we've got a lot of, I think, fear and anxiety that has developed over the years in relation to substance use matters, which is sometimes driven by misunderstanding, sometimes deliberately exaggerated in terms of negative consequences. I'm old enough to remember when drug testing was the new black, so to speak. I can remember fifteen odd years ago how much drug testing companies were claiming that they would have cut through solutions to these issues and if only workplaces would implement more drug testing. Obviously, notwithstanding the commercial imperative that those companies had. Unfortunately, the results have been much more patchy. And I'm aware of a number of business leaders who've walked back from their commitment to drug testing because of the lack of effective results compared to the cost. And so it is a difficult area. I've had the pleasure of reading a number of the submissions that have been provided to the committee. And I can therefore attest to how difficult your challenge is. But in relation to more particularly, I think medicinal cannabis, it's worth remembering that whilst it was once illegal in its entirety, it's now benefiting tens of thousands, in fact, many more Australians than I would have predicted five years ago. That rubs up against some of the protections that we've understood to be important in relation to particularly the Equal Opportunity Act. And one of the opportunities, I think, is to better understand disability and particularly to better understand how we should be treating people who are under medical supervision and who have been prescribed a medication according to the clinician's best judgement. And whilst it's true that there are some players in the medicinal cannabis industry that are, what's the word? You know, go close to the edge or indeed over the edge of inappropriate behaviour, inappropriate prescribing, inappropriate marketing, et cetera, et cetera. That's true across systems. There's always bad apples in every system. And we've had many, many, many experiences now of poor prescribing of substances. And so I don't think that's therefore a logical conclusion to be sweeping in generalisation that medicinal cannabis is an illegitimate form of medicine. Some people make that jump. It's an exaggeration. It's actually an effective medical intervention. That's why so many doctors are prescribing it and so many patients are benefiting from it. When it comes to workplace drug testing, one of the challenges in a fast-moving environment in relation to these issues is that some of our legislative frameworks are not contemporary and appropriate for current circumstances. And I think that applies actually to what was mentioned by the previous witness, which is in relation to the Equal Opportunity Act. And I think there's a very cogent argument to make amendments to the Equal Opportunity Act to protect people who are being prescribed medical substances, even if they are psychoactive substances. There are other protections in the Act to balance workplace health and safety priorities. But fundamentally, we've got a situation now where we have people who are prescribed medication and are at risk of losing their employment, are at risk of absolute destruction of their livelihood because they are putting their health and their advice and recommendations of their doctor first. They're therefore discriminated against in the workplace because, I think, mostly of the hangover that we have from when cannabis was purely illicit and the medicinal benefits were not understood or in fact legal. And we're now in a situation where we have medicinal cannabis as a legitimate treatment intervention, but we don't have protections for those people. And I think in that sense, amendments to Section 7 of the Equal Opportunity Act are a logical modernisation to protect people in the community who are obviously already vulnerable because they are undertaking medical treatment for their disability. They should be protected. And I think that's a clear and simple intervention that the Parliament could make to protect people in the Victorian community.
Thank you, John. Are you going to make any comments?
Thanks, Chair, and yeah, thanks for the opportunity. Just very briefly, I've been working in the medicinal cannabis space for about eight years or so. And I remember back in 2015, 2016, when we were counting the number of patients who were getting access on a single hand or then two hands. And the extensive hurdles that those often quite desperately sick people and their families needed to go through to get access to medicinal cannabis in what was at the time a really confronting political and social environment with very unclear regulatory structures and patient access processes. And for many of them, it was extremely traumatising and remains so. And that's still true for many of these people who are getting access. So I'm, as someone who's been paying very close attention to this issue for such a long time, I'm obviously very heartened by the considerable growth from a negligible base that we've seen in terms of how many Australians are being able to access these medicines under clinical supervision, which I think is a good thing. But I would emphasise that it's not a done deal yet. I personally still speak to many people all the time who are unable to find a healthcare professional who is prepared to consider medicinal cannabis as a treatment option despite it being appropriate for that patient or despite that patient feeling that it would be appropriate for them. Plenty of patients or people that I've been speaking to over the years who have said that they have taken medicinal cannabis, found it to be effective for treating their medical condition, and then chosen to cease taking it because of the real or perceived risk to their employment. And I think that real or perceived risk is an important point that I'm sure many people have touched on in their submissions and their testimony so far. It's clear to me from reading the submissions to this inquiry that there is significant ambiguity and uncertainty with regards to what kind of policies may or may not be in place and how they may or may not be enforced in this workplace or that workplace. And I can't imagine how much more labyrinthine and risky it might seem to an everyday person who hasn't spent their whole life thinking about these issues. So I think we need to keep patient access in mind and the experiences of people who are treating their medical conditions front of mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. More than a time, we might just keep it four minutes each. I'll go first with Professor. I'll follow my question to you. You mentioned about, actually, you recommended the guideline, listen to implement a workplace testing. And you mentioned a lot about stigma, confidentiality, job loss and the need approach for health approach. Have you looked at any model which news drug testing in the workplace, any model, has a positive result, which ticks all the box relating to stigma, confidentiality regarding informations and the health approach to it? We assist those who are tested positive. Have you come across any at all?
Thank you, Chair. I suppose the way I would answer the question would be to say that what I think you need, which from memory we haven't found, and we detailed a number of examples in our submission of legislation that allows workplace drug testing, is a comprehensive approach that does a number of things at once, including legislation that sets out exactly how workplace drug testing is to unfold, that affords protections to employees, that has safeguards, that doesn't allow for excessive discretion or discriminatory targeting of employees and the like. And I think there are gaps in a number of the acts that we set out in our submission. We talk about the broad-based corruption legislation, policing legislation, commercial passenger vehicles legislation. And in all of those acts, there are gaps, I think. So I think the short answer to your question is no, not in the Victorian context at least. There's nothing that I can point to that's absolutely perfect, especially because of the risk of stigma.
Just listen to, I mean, basically, just any model across the world, like any organisation across the world that you have come across at all or you're aware of?
I'd have to take that question on notice, I think, because I haven't done a careful global analysis of.
Just in Australia, have you looked at the ADF model regarding drug testing, alcohol testing?
Sorry, Chair, could you repeat that?
Have you touched base or looked into the ADF Australian Defence Force model and drug and alcohol testing regarding the soldiers?
I don't think we have at the moment. I'm looking at Sean to see if we've looked at it, but I don't think we have for this.
It would be good if you do look at that, see what your opinion lesson to their model is lesson to confidentiality and stigma and the way that we have their soldiers. That's a question on notice. Just your opinion and your finding on that.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I'll just quickly throw a question to you, John. You mentioned across the workplace, they've been seeking, asking for workplace testing and it costs, it's a big factor. I was just wanting to ask you, listen to medicinal cannabis, which is prescribed, not the artist, and which I, at the stage, I know there's the stigma lesson because of the history of cannabis usage. Where do you sit lesson to the impairment of medicinal cannabis? Should we look at prescription medicinal cannabis overall or should we just look at those who have a low percentage of THC?
Chair, it's not my prerogative, but if I may, I think the Defence Force policy in relation to drug testing is really interesting. And I think there's going to be developments in relation that, based on my reading of the media and the recent tragic death of a paratrooper in relation to whether or not people tested positive and were then not available for work. So one of the big productivity impacts of testing people, not for impairment but for presence, is that they are then removed from their productive work role unnecessarily. In terms of a model that I've seen that's interesting, the doctor's health program actually, I think, is very interesting in terms of how they very carefully manage and drug test doctors who've ended up with drug problems. But they throw a huge amount of resources at it and most systems wouldn't be able to afford that kind of care. And it does show though that if we care about people who've run into drug dependence particularly, we can actually treat our way out of those problems. In relation to, and now, sorry, having taken the prerogative, I've now forgotten exactly the specifics of your question.
Of course, listen, you mentioned, listen, medicinal cannabis, prescribed one, not the recreational one. Due to the evidence regardless, listen to its impairment of the THC, should we consider medicinal cannabis overall with high THC or just to look at those with low percentage THC or none at all?
Well, I think, yes, I think the idea of none at all, I mean, what we're not testing for is actually impairment. What we're testing for is presence. And I think if we get out of our minds this idea that we can test through drug testing for THC and as a result of that be able to judge an impairment, I think that's a logical error. So the challenge is actually getting away from the idea that just because somebody's got drugs, you know, the tests positive for cannabis are therefore impaired. I think the evidence for that is non-existent because of the long time that it takes for cannabis to clear from our system. I think the Equal Opportunity Act provides a good framing for these issues, particularly in relation to when testing should be applied and how that should be implemented. I think that's a reasonable way of working, which is to really protect first and foremost the health of the individual who's under medical care, but also acknowledging that that has safety impacts in the workplace. I think that balance is already covered off in the Equal Opportunity Act.
So taking your, to clarify your answer, it's basically the THC is not an issue. It wasn't, we shouldn't treat it as an issue regardless of the percentage or whatever traces in the prescribed but not the.
I think the problem is that THC testing, presence of THC as a positive test result is not evidence of impairment.
No, but it shouldn't consider the level at all.
Yeah.
Thank you. Deputy Chair?
Related to that, do you think there can be harm from impairment in the workplace due to the use of prescription medication, including medicinal cannabis? And I suppose related to that, who do you think is best placed to identify and respond to that harm?
Well, I think from, so yes, in answer to your question directly, absolutely, these substances can be impairing. Benzodiazepines, for example, anti-anxiety medications or sleeping tablets also have a very long half-life, can be very impairing. So can opioid pain relief. I've had that experience myself of driving after a surgical procedure, having not been told that I shouldn't be driving with high dose opioids. We focus so much in the community conversation about the impairing effects of cannabis, but I think some of the other medicinal products that people are being prescribed are also impairing. In terms of who's most responsible, I'm afraid to say that it's the Parliament of Victoria is responsible for providing the legislative framework in the end.
Assessing risk.
Yeah, so I think the gig for, the job for Parliament, I think, is to create the framework that's fair, reasonable and protects individual patients, but also protects their colleagues and the general public. At the implementation level, I think it's reasonable that business owners take responsibility for that. But as has already been described, at the moment, it's a Wild West approach. And I think we do need improved safeguards.
Excellent segue into my next question, which is, who do you think has the best examples of regulatory practice or codes of practice for workplace drug testing at the moment? I don't know if any of our colleagues from La Trobe want to tell us who's doing it well or what makes a good regulatory approach?
I'm happy to jump in. I know this is a similar question to that of the Chair, which I have taken on notice and I will provide some further information on some of those models. But I think in answer to your question of what makes for a good regulatory approach, it's an approach that first and foremost is grounded in a public policy rationale. So that is that there is a connection between the reason for testing and the industry within which testing is taken. which testing is taking place, and public policy considerations such as safety. And as John Ryan was just explaining, I couldn't agree more about those concerns around testing for presence rather than testing for impairment. That is a good example of a situation where there would be no, in my view, sound public policy rationale for testing, somebody for the mere presence of a drug that might not be impairing, let alone in an industry where safety, for instance, is not a consideration or not a central concern. So that, to me, is the sort of foremost consideration. What is the public policy rationale for testing? And then what kind of testing are we going with, you know, in light of consideration of the industry or field within which the employee sits? And then.
Sorry, so just on that point, do you think therefore that we need an overarching approach, or an industry by industry approach, from a, if the Parliament needs to make a decision about these sorts of things?
Yes, I think an overarching approach, but there has, there has to be clear guidelines and policies to direct businesses then in terms of the operationalisation of those policies. And we talk a little bit about that in our submission, the kind of, you know, glaring omissions and gaps in certain industries that don't seem to have those kinds of protections in place.
Just to field on that, if I can draw your attention to page two of our submission, in that we point out that in 2005, the Victorian Law Reform Commission published a report into workplace privacy, and that report recommended the creation of workplace privacy legislation and mandatory codes of practice about the taking of bodily samples from workers or prospective workers for the purposes of AOD testing, and would address a number of matters. So, it's been some time since that 2005 report. New South Wales has introduced legislation that same year on this particular topic, and perhaps it might be prudent for the committee in the Parliament to consider that report in light of the issues that have been raised during this.
Good text, Chair. Right, you?
Thank you Chair, and thank you to you all for coming in today and presenting. So yesterday, we heard from some of the unions and associations that represent workers, and in particular, we heard of case studies where medicinal cannabis patients had disclosed that they are patients. And in one instance, they had a supervisor actually say to them, it would be easier if you were just back on your opiate-based medication. John, I note that you mentioned earlier around benzodiazepines and the impact that they can have on impairment. But considering this, you know, in those, in those case studies that we heard from, when they had a medicinal cannabis test, or even a disclosure of using medicinal cannabis, they were instantly stood down for review. In comparison, if they were to use other, but other medications, including opiate-based medications, they had a medical defence. Is this a workplace policy about creating a safe work environment, or is it that there's laws that aren't currently adequate to protect medicinal cannabis patients? I'm opening it up to the floor, yeah.
Kate, do you want to, well, I, I, thank you for the question. I, I think it's, you know, from a learning perspective, I think we're still learning, and I don't think we've quite caught up with medicinal cannabis. And I think there is, in fact, a lot of ignorance about medicinal cannabis, and it gets treated most harshly by lots of people across the community compared to what we've got very used to, which is opioids and benzodiazepines and other, other medications. So, I think it's actually a challenge from a legislative perspective to protect people who are vulnerable, AKA people who are under medical care and treatment. But it's also a challenge to improve community understanding, and that, that's something that I think we haven't done in relation to medicinal cannabis. We haven't explained enough to the community what, the reasons why people are using medicinal cannabis, the benefits that it provides, and indeed, how to effectively operate in our community with medicinal cannabis. The community education piece has been almost zero.
Could I jump in and just add there to John's response? In our submission, we raised some concerns about these issues as well, and we do make the, the observation that, I suppose there are two things. One is that, as John's been describing, there is a legacy issue here in terms of cannabis historically being illegal, and the legacy effects of that and its flow-on effects in terms of how medicinal cannabis is understood. But also, we do make the observation that there is generally a low level of literacy around drug law and drug policy in Australia broadly. And I think that we see that in the example that you, you mentioned about, given in evidence yesterday from some of those union members. And in our submission, you know, this is one of the reasons why we talk about the importance of ensuring that there are safeguards in workplace practice, so that there isn't excessive discretion, or a lack of guidance for individual workplaces and employers on how to operationalise their obligations when it comes to workplace drug testing. Including because there may be a lack of understanding among those responsible for operationalising such policies that medicinal cannabis is legal and perfectly suitable. And in many instances, you know, as we've been discussing, there are kind of questions around presence versus impairment. That if you have a system that doesn't have, or that has too much discretion involved and doesn't have those protections, you do end up with these kinds of results that you've been describing. So that, in our view, is very problematic and something that we hope that the committee is able to address.
David?
Thank you. And thank you for appearing today. I might just continue on that line of questioning. So you pointed out a number of examples in your presentation and in your submission, but where there's inconsistency, I guess, across different, even across industries in how they test, how they, you know, their, their approach to, to AOD issues in the workplace. In order to resolve some of those inconsistencies, where, where do you think we should be looking at, I guess from a legislative point of view? What, what are the key, where are the sort of key areas we should be targeting as a starting point?
Sean, did you want to say anything there, or do you?
I might, just to say that one of the key things that we've identified in our submission is that there's an inconsistent approach whereby some industries are quite regulated in terms of drug testing, whereas other industries are not. So the first key thing would be to have a consistent legislative approach across industries, in line with the kind of recommendations that are set out in our submission and that of others. And then, then the second is to provide consistency across those industries that are currently regulated. So this is going to take some degree of law reform, and addressing the inconsistencies in legislation, but also providing an overall legislative framework that can underpin workplace drug testing in line with the recommendations of that 2005 V L R C report. Kate, might have some more to add?
No, well, perhaps other than just to, to make the point, or go back to the point that I made earlier about public policy rationale, which is, I think, where reform has to start. The question is, you know, the sort of fundamental or foundational question really in my mind is what is the public policy rationale for testing? And a framework should follow that allows for testing in instances of safety first, workplace and community safety first and foremost.
Okay, thank you. And I think that leads to a question that we've, we've sort of heard a bit about yesterday, there's different views on the role of testing in and of itself. And there are some who believe that, you know, it should be done in every workplace for everyone, and that it, it does lead to reduced, you know, injuries and adverse events in workplaces. There are others that contested that information. I guess from your perspective, perhaps Pennington Institute, do you have a view on that?
Well, I'm sorry, but I'm just reminded of one of the under-researched areas, which is the consequences of drug consumption as a result of drug testing regimes. And, and I think, you know, there's a lot of anecdotal evidence, particularly from Western Australia, that the increase in methamphetamine consumption was a direct result of cannabis testing. So, because methamphetamine goes over your system quickly, it's better to take methamphetamine on Friday, go to work on Monday, than take cannabis on Friday and go to work on Monday. The harm profile from methamphetamine is much worse than cannabis. We've seen in, in custodial settings in England where the, where the preference is for synthetic cannabis to be consumed because it avoids drug testing regime. So I think it has a distorting effect on the drug market, which can be actually more harmful to the community than not doing that testing. So I think it's a risky approach. And in terms of the cost-effectiveness of doing it right across the community, other than the, than the amazing share price rocketing for those drug testing companies, I don't see it as either practical or affordable, let alone it makes me very uncomfortable about what sort of draconian system we live in, if that's, if that's how we're going to play. That's something that other countries might do that are not liberal democracies, but we are, thankfully.
Yes, thank you Chair. Could I first of all just thank both organisations for your really thoughtful submissions and, and your, your presence here today, as well as, we're going to present funds. Could I perhaps just first of all ask the folks from La Trobe, first of all, can I take you up on your offer of supplementary information with regard to sections seven of the Discrimination Act, but possibly to broaden that? And I guess the question in my mind is, you raise a whole lot of really interesting and historical perspective to this. I mean, I had no idea about the 2005 privacy element. So, I guess my question is firstly, you say that testing should cover all workplaces, or you need an approach to testing that covers all workplaces, but also that one size doesn't fit all. So I'm, I'm sort of wondering, how do you square the circle on that, or what would that look like if it was given practical application?
I might jump in here and just make an initial comment, just to, to make sure that there's no confusion, which dovetails off the back of the last question and John's response. To be clear, we're not suggesting or recommending testing in all workplaces. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And for the, for some of the reasons that John suggests, as well as others, we would be in fact, you know, very much opposed to such a proposal. But what we're talking about in our submission is the need for an overarching, consistent framework with consistent principles and practices and sort of, and fundamental principles about how workplace drug testing should be approached. I'm not a parliamentary drafts person, although I have a little bit of experience in legislative drafting, it's, it's very minor. You know, there's a question in my mind about whether there is the need for an overarching workplace drug testing act that instills various principles and then allows for, for the act to be operationalised in individual workplaces where appropriate, and where, for instance, the public policy rationale sits or, or matches. Beyond, beyond that, as I said, you know, I'm not sure if that's, I'm not sure if that's the best approach, but that might be one possibility, is for an overarching act that contains those protections. Sean might have some additional thoughts on this as well?
No, I think you've summed that up well. Thanks, Kate.
Okay, so, so potentially this would, because if you don't have some sort of instrument like that, presumably you're also going to be going into things like the Privacy Act and various other pieces of legislation. Perhaps I could ask you just to, in given time, if you could perhaps just elaborate on that. And without doing the drafting, I think we'd certainly be interested in your thoughts on, if you like, the architecture and the application. If I could just ask the, the, our friends from the Pennington Institute, question about the setting of, of notional maximum blood levels for things like THC. And I guess we've seen this in a number of countries where, if you like, they're fairly progressive, but they've still done it. I'm wondering your thoughts on whether or not there's a role for the setting of maximum blood levels for things like THC?
I, I believe you're having representatives from the Lambert Initiative for cannabinoid therapeutics later today, and I'm, I'm sure they're, I mean, they are the best people to ask on this topic. But my very layperson understanding of the literature is that there's no clear correlation between blood level of THC metabolites and impairment, despite attempts to find a correlative link.
So why do you think in those countries that have fairly sophisticated approaches, they've chosen to do that, do you think?
Well, it's not clear to me that those choices are made for scientific reasons.
And would you like to elaborate on that?
Well, I guess they were probably made for political reasons. I mean, the community expects to be protected from risks. Many people believe that THC in particular poses risk in some way, shape or form. And as politicians, it's a delicate, delicate balancing act to implement sound policy while also reassuring people that you are implementing sound policy, and sometimes you make compromises.
So you see that as primarily then a political trade-off?
Based on my very limited, you know, a layperson understanding of policy decisions made in a foreign country, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Quickly, Dr Hay, have you got some questions?
No, no, I'm okay. Thank you so very much for your presentation.
Thank you so much Professor, and Sean, the Pennington Institute for coming in and please submission and give me evidence, it's invaluable. Some we will definitely get. And also those questions I noticed, Professor, we'll get all the information and we're looking forward to our recommendation as well. So thank you much for coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.